Good evening. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, January 16, 2018, 7:00 PM. The Royal Hall, Dr. Abendo.
President.
Dr. Samuel.
Yes.
Dr. McMoore.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
Dr. Narama.
Here.
At the regular eight, the President and Acting City Manager Michael Peck, incorporation Council of the Aces DC, and now the Speaker to the flag.
Dr. Abendo, which he is?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the very God-awesomeness of our nation, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all.
All right, I just want to welcome everyone and thank you for coming this evening. Our first meeting of 2018, and we'll get this meeting started. Mr. Acting City Manager, do you have a name?
Yes. We had quite a significant snowfall there at the Long Beach Heights, and I'd like to commend the CSEA work force for their hard work in defending the roads to the state. The city initiated a thorough preparation and response plan, and the public works proved its terrificial execution. During the height of the snow removal process, the city dispatched sixty-one pieces of equipment, including tail loaded three plows, with our primary focus was initially for commuters, making parking everything fully ready for speech in the Lyle Roadway parking area safe as possible. Crews worked around the clock to ensure that all the roads were passed there. If those like to thank Governor Cuomo and the Air Force Public Transportation for sending four additional pieces of heavy equipment to assist us in the snow removal process. Anyone that lives in Long Beach knows we have narrow roads, so we can't just plow the snow anywhere we want, we have to actually plow to the intersections and then truck it away, and they did great job. After working all these hours, our sanitation department then that followed on Thursday, did pick up every bit of garbage in the East End in really deflo- defloable condition. So, we really owe a big gratitude to our sanitation department. As this dramatic shift in temperatures last week, water mains and services in some areas of the city have frozen, which caused a discoloration of water. The city identified affected areas, and with a limited window of time to leave this area before the temperatures stop opening, city crews were at the plus low side, which on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, obeying the water, the discoloration of water process. And we did monitor our water throughout the entire process, and it did meet the public health standards. And if you, and with experience any problems with that, then contact DBW at 431-1011. Yesterday, we had a tremendous turnout for the MLK Commemorative March, which followed by a special commemorative program at the MLK Center. Thanks to everyone for joining us, a special thanking to our keynote speakers, Henry Michael Blake, who probably were most inspiring speakers I heard. It was a tremendous, in the early morning program, that is more organized. We had quite a few clergy, elected officials, and the speeches got better and better as the morning went on. The Nehemiah Project, which is a local group, really did a tremendous job of entertaining everyone, and it really was a proper, proper steward of Dr. King. The comprehensive plan is going to be long, the community's interest has been critical in guiding the city through the comprehensive plan and local waterfront revitalization program process. The eighteenth and final public meeting will be taking place on Thursday, January 25th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM at the Mount Magnolias Senior Center, 6:00 to 6:50 Magnolial Boulevard. City staff will be on hand to answer any questions. And if you want more information on comprehensive plan, please go to longbeachlistens.com for additional information. It's a tough time of year and a tough economy for a lot of people, so ours, built out of a city clerk, has joined in the conjunction with the Lyle Village Village Clerk and Treasuries Association in accepting from food donations through Wednesday night, March 18, the city clerk's office on the third floor. Please visit the city's website or listen to suggested donations, and please give. The Long Beach Bowl Bear will make their annual plunge, Super Bowl Sunday, February 5th, under the Side Boulevard Beach, with a proceeds home to make a wish. Tea show sales will begin at 10:00 AM, and Bowler Bears will gather on the beach at 12:30. It really is a very fun event. We take out a bandstand, we have music, we have very engaging DJ or master ceremonies. So, it is a lot of fun and a good place to see all of our Long Beach friends. The fourth annual Long Beach Music Festival will be held at the library on February 9th through 10th, featuring several amazing local talents. Visit longbeachmusicfestival.com for more information. And lastly, the Long Beach Neo Buds Council will be hosting its rescheduled first Friday event on Friday, January 19th, at the Long Beach Hotel with the Anthony CK Group. Also, the Arts Council is looking for board members, so if you're interested and have the necessary qualifications, we encourage you to submit your application. The application is on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acting City Manager. You touched on the celebration and events of yesterday. We did honor our sanitation workers, looking back fifty years since Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated, being down in Memphis at the Memphis sanitation worker strike. So, we did honor our sanitation workers, and just for a little more comprehensive view of what happened yesterday, I'd like to call up our Director of Community Development and Resident of Child Beach, Mr. Mark McMoore, and just give us an overview.
Good evening, and thank you for calling up the President. As City Manager and City Manager discussed, we had a wonderful day, and I would thank you guys all for coming yesterday, but as we know, the work to honor and preserve Dr. King's legacy doesn't just happen on an okay day, it has to happen the day after an okay day, and we want some of that in recent after an okay day. So, I'd like to report on some of the investments the Department of Community Development has made into the MLK Center and into that community. First off, we have our MLK senior program that operates every Tuesday, Thursday at MLK Center, which we have cooked, prepares food and programming for our seniors. We're looking to expand that and make sure that they're treated our seniors the way they deserve to be. Second, we just leveraged the CDPG funds to make sure that we're making expansion of investments into improving the public facility at the MLK Center, improving a four mards room. We have a studio that now has a full light mirror, a dance off that we have instructions in there, so make sure that we are inspired by our youth to use our musical talents for good. We also just unveiled yesterday MLK Way. So, now the intersection of Pine Street, Bayou beside Boulevard, now needs MLK Way to, you know, give back in such that we preserve the historic legacy of African Americans and blacks through our community and the work of our Long Beach as whole. We also put in a lecture room at the MLK Center that's fully furnished, so make sure that we have some collaborative programs for our group there. Lastly, we are doing the residency measures since the building, we put, we put the Department of Public Works to stay invested in this, to put the two drainage, the park and my MLK Center, to make sure that we start to mitigate the flooding around that area. And second, in the residence space, we also have solar panels on top of the facility so that we can make sure that we are inefficient in the building, which costs $130,000. So, over the past year, we have, over the past year, since MLK Center and the surrounding areas, we've made over $200,000 in cash relationship of this council and the city manager, so we're grateful to continue to do that in our department, and again, that's important, that we uplift and empower minorities, not just on okay day, not just on Black History Month, but weeks and days and months that follow. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just add, we also painted the entire flipping side of the MLK Center, using mostly city CSEA workers volunteering to do that. A good, feel-good part of the story is we used 106 gallons of paint that were completely donated when the vendor found out that all our local workers were doing this work for free. He felt he should give something back and provide old paint to make him judge.
Mr. McMoore, can I just, once again, ask you a question about the survey in times past, when you were part of the Empowered North Park Initiative? You worked on engaging in assessment and collecting some data, so are we still doing that at this point?
Sure, so in 2015, we did the Empowered North Park Survey, which we went door to door, using interns from within the community that were dueling, dueling or certification of your, reaching all the leadership speakers within the neighborhood, and pretty much enjoyed. I think it's important that as the council and as a government that are responsive to those surveys for 2015, so we did collect about 300 surveys. We know the issues, and we really, we know what the residents want, so I think it's important to deliver on that, and that's what these residents at the MLK Center have tried to do, and we continue to do that. I guess we're continuously reading, talking to residents, adding that to the board of MLK last week, we've turned citizens to North Park last month, I feel civic social as well, so I think that, you know, we have to be driven by data, so we have to receive, so get feedback as we make the investments, I guess, as far as we can as conference as possible.
I know you're happy also for our seniors over at MLK Center, so you engage in survey there as well?
Absolutely, in fact, we did. I still love him, he's on my staff, he initiated the survey in December, and to the senior program, we got some feedback. We're working on that feedback, and one of the things that you guys have pushed collectively to the council, and the council has been for 30 days at MLK, you know, because this is really a big opportunity for the seniors to leave their house, and really one of the only times they, it's one of the only times they actually leave, so we definitely continue to increase the programming, but also make sure it's not just having programs, just to have programs, to make sure they're quality, that they are, you know, actually growing from those programs.
Thank you. I just want to thank all the members of the committee, both you and your staff on the committee, that planned the event at the MLK Center that took place yesterday, and you brought some information back to the city, and who were able to partner and make sure that it was a fabulous event that included so many people from the community, so I want to thank you for doing that, as well as all of the committee members who took the time and effort to really be part of that event, it was really very special.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McMoore.
Our first public hearing this evening is for a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street march requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for a smoothie juice bar.
Everybody here? Is the business owner here? Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Susan, from the Ford Johnson Avenue, Alpha T R.
And can you tell us what's the nature of your business?
It's going to be primarily smoothies, juices, I say bolts, small, small branded products.
Okay, and do you expect roadside deliveries?
Not at the time.
Not at the time. And the amount of employees?
It's going to be, at this point, the...
Employees. I would encourage you to put a bike rack out front. You were playing on doing minutes, okay, great, I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
If you call the Department of Public Works, they could probably set you up with one of ours, you know, so that they match what's on the rest of the city. Does any of the council have any questions?
Do you know your hours of operation, they do, in the summertime of the max life, you have a day like this, and it's probably between 7:30 and about 8:00, 9:00, 10:00?
That's during the summer?
Correct.
Do you have any anticipated train routes?
And at this time, it will be shorter, which probably around 9:00 or about 10:00.
Anyone from the public? Come on up. Please state your...
Thank you for asking a bike rack question, I just wanted to ask if the owner of the shop would be willing to have not just one bike rack for customers, but two bike racks, because we need short-term and long-term parking. I'd also like this council to consider that there is now, I love the idea of this new business, however, we're now putting more vehicles on our streets, and we're going to have more people circling our residential neighborhoods, looking for parking at the corner of where this is, it's Virginia, correct? Virginia and Beach Street. Does Acting City Manager might be able to answer a little bit about this, but I do believe that that is a fairly high crash area, there may have been a couple fatalities, serious injuries at that intersection over the past decade. We need crosswalks there, we need a no turn on red sign there, before we even consider opening a business where there's going to be a high pedestrian and bicycle customer base going in. And as far as the deliveries, I'd wanted to ask him one more question about that, because having a restaurant background, I know that there will be deliveries, and I'd like to know what hours these deliveries are going to be from the vendors. I'd also like to know if this business is going to have new delivery, so we're going to have even more vehicles on our streets, circling block, whether looking for parking or double parking while they're waiting for their, you know, the package they should not deliver. So, what I'm asking here is, I don't want to stop this person from getting their parking waiver, but I'd like you guys to seriously consider, before cramming another, what will definitely be a very busy shop in the West End, probably a high-traffic shop, consider the concept of parking management, consider the concept of planning before giving away parking waivers like your Oprah and parking waiver, parking waiver. This is, people, people's lives are at play here, and this is important. And so, I would like you for this particular parking waiver to consider what I'm saying, so please consider a no turn on red right there, where the auto body shop is, and consider putting crosswalks in there. And moving forward on any other parking waivers, consider smarter planning before, and consider parking management before giving away parking waivers, especially in the West End. Thank you.
Thank you. So, can I take a question? You did say no deliveries, delivery services, what I believe you were answering, is that correct?
Delivery for product I'm selling.
I believe you were answering product that you're selling.
Selling.
And as far, as far as product perceiving?
The product, the daily product I'm selling, frozen product, it's not really letting itself be delivered.
Right, and as far as your deliveries that you're going to be getting, do you expect many in trucks?
The maximum I'm expecting a truck to stay on the street is probably a few minutes, 10, 15 minutes, and deliveries probably twice a month.
Twice a month, and that's something that you can do in off-hours, in other type of traffic. Thank you.
And I believe that facility lends itself to deliveries on the duty end, not on duty. There is a back, a side door. I believe pre-owned or private stuff, it's, they would reach them.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, close the hearing, next item.
Our second public hearing for a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street march requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for bakery.
Hello.
Hi.
Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Catherine Schumetti, 76th and Quaid Street.
And the nature of your business?
Bakery, based by the ocean is the bakery, and that's my neighbor.
Hours of operation?
Seven, seven, slower months, and a little later during the warmer months.
And just to go back, bakery, baked goods, cakes, cupcakes, cookies, stuff like that?
Baked goods, hearts, cookies.
Right.
A few breads, confections, chocolates, packaged fruit delables, and soft serve ice cream.
Do you expect many deliveries?
I would get deliveries once, twice a week before 8:00 AM, and I have my corner space, and my delivery entrance is on Virginia. I also have a parking spot in the back for any deliveries I would make personally, my space as a parking spot.
Okay. And we would encourage definitely getting a bike rack out front.
I would love to get a bike rack, if I can for my own bike, as possible.
Okay, you just contacted DBW, and we can probably work, we can work something else. Does anyone from the council have any questions? Anyone from the public have any other questions, comments? No, seeing none, thank you, close the hearing.
Onto the regular calendar. I am one's a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street march requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for a smoothie juice bar, hearings can hold on this item already. I am two's a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street march requirements for premise 917 West Beach Street for bakery, hearings can hold on this item already. I am three's a resolution to submit public road information to New York State Public Transportation.
This item is, we get reimbursed by New York State Public Transportation for maintaining our roads, and after reviewing our roadmap, it was discovered that a section of East Wall Street, 291 miles, was left off the map. So, we are making this resolution to put it back on the map so we can perceive the right funding, which will be a little higher than we get now. It's not going to be tremendous, but every penny helps.
Did we lose any funding because of the error?
Every year that we will reimburse, we will, that's funny.
Will we be able to get any of that back, or just going forward?
No, just going forward.
Anyone else from the council, any questions? Seeing none, any, any questions or comments from the public? Mrs. Blanchett? Just state your name again.
I'm Blanchett. I don't have, you ran out of things, so I'm just hearing this. Who was responsible for putting in the stuff for the reimbursements?
Department of Public Works.
The Department of Public Works, so all these years we were missing point, what was it?
Point nine.
Point, almost a mile, we were missing. It was missing from a map for how long, how many years?
I don't know.
Just for a long, just for a long time.
We discovered it, and we're ready to handle it.
Oh my God, seriously, do you have a general idea of how much money that was?
No, I don't, we have approximately 52 miles of water, so it wasn't, it was a half percent, one, two percent.
Two percent that we didn't discover. And that was DBW?
Yes.
Then that's passed for that, okay, great, thanks.
Anyone else from the public have any question or comment? Seeing none, next item.
I implore the resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase various chemicals for the water purification plant of those responsible vendors.
Yes, as you know, we must, we pump the water out of wells, we purify it, and then we transmit it to the houses, and it's necessary for us to make that water safe, and using two of the most, oh, two very important chemicals in that process, bid roll on January 4th at 11, and this reflects that too.
Any questions from the council?
It says bids were received, just going forward, if it's, I'd like to see the bids as well, it's in the city charter that the council's supposed to be presented with the, all the bids, as well as the city manager's recommendation for which one to develop.
It should attach to this item on the agenda for you, we have three different bids.
Okay, so just fill the volume.
Do you know how many there were, four bids, support?
Five, Promise Day Holland, Chemtray Chemicals, US Alco, Raymond, and Farming's Line. And the bids were actually almost exactly identical to the last couple of years, on the fact we should have received, they compared the 2015, '16, '17 prices, the, the Chemtray Chemicals was awarded the, boom, sulfate did, and it went from point eight to oh eight to point eight eight eight, and the Hydrated Volk line went from 196.50 a ton to 197, so 50 cents per ton of these. So, the state, the piping equipment is stable.
I'm just moving forward, just that little sheet that you have with all the different bids, if you can make sure they're in the council packet.
Absolutely.
Any questions from the public, comments? No? Seeing none, next item.
And five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase two utility vehicles for the city police park.
I'd like the police to sit here, come up. These are, these are two vehicles, they are ATV-type vehicles, which would keep the officers closer to the sand, to make it much safer for the sunbathing and bathing public, it also gives us a lot of mobility in and around the beach park. Every day, at the end of the day, we use these vehicles when the light pods are home to keep people out of the water, so they need to be right down by the tide line, and it's a real safety issue, and there's no way to control three miles of beach without a couple of extra vehicles.
Any questions from the council?
I was looking into this, and I'm not able to find a Kawasaki USX204SC, SC, there's an XCSC, I'm just going to know if that is possibly a type of, or is a different model that I can't find on the Kawasaki one.
I will, I will get that in pictures.
Okay, and then just one other is on the Polaris. The base price on that model is 13,300. I went and I kind of loaded it up with pretty much anything I could think of that we might need, and having difficulty getting up to 19,000, so I'm just wondering, is this thing outfitted differently somehow that brings the price up that much, or?
The problem is, it's a bid project, so we don't get to do, the 5, we have to take whatever bid is lowest, um, we want to get, so they, a lot of them didn't notice, and we don't get the benefit of the best price.
So, can't go off the road and buy them?
Absolutely not. Maybe the next time.
Anything else from the council? General public? Anybody else? Ms. Volosadish? Name to the record?
Mary Volosadish, I was just wondering, I've gone to many beaches with the light pod around the country, California, Texas, Florida, Virginia, many of them get like these ATVs and these small pickup trucks that you see the serpents on, like Baywatch, they get these things donated. Do we have anyone that could ever write to some of these larger companies and see if you do have things donating? Have we ever thought of doing that? I bet, I'm telling you, I've been, even till now, when I was really young, I started. So, you're talking about many years, and you go down to Florida, you go down to Texas, you go to California, and it will get the company's name underneath that donated, and the patrol up here, and I don't know why we don't do things like that, to save ourselves tens and maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars, instead of always going and buying, especially, you know, the beach stuff. I think did you ever ask by companies that we buy from to perhaps chip in, or, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but...
Sponsor.
Yeah, have we ever done that, to save one of those?
We do get sponsors, not for necessarily tangible bits like that, but like our fireworks shows, the $12,000 fireworks show that is donated.
I know, but what I'm saying is, I've seen it.
Right.
And I've talked to them, okay, and they, and they donate, they get dealerships to donate, the smaller pickup trucks that are, you know, so your mom is, and they put the boards on top, they put their Asian in the back, and we have to, we need to stop looking at things that we can benefit from, and they benefit us. I mean, we get lots of people from all over, that would seem to suck the funds name, we need to look into things like this, doesn't seem like a lot, but 34 trucks.
So, that's...
Four ATVs, you got some donated, one before from somebody, the light pods, am I correct? Are you taking it?
I think those were, I think those were grants, that's why.
No, they just donated, they donated.
Now, they were grants from the, from the, from...
I'm talking about eight, eight years ago, so there was some donating, because I got right down and standing, but...
I appreciate the, the recommendation, and I can see how it would be very valuable to a business to have their name, which should go over the age.
Yeah, I mean, it's only 40, 50,000, that's something you could put, was something that we need in the infrastructure, it's not me, it's my daughter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Volosadish. You went twice, right? Just state your name and address for the record.
Please do that. First of all, happy new year, congratulations, John, who, Scott, and to run a new temporary manager.
Quick question, did John brought up, and I'm pretty sure he answered, this stuff that goes out, have you answered about the bid in terms of the trucks? Is there any, is that his city?
No, that's New York State Link Store.
That's a New York State store? Well, there's no way around it, it's less expensive, but did John have a good point?
Yes, no, it's actually called the Link Store.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubow. Ms. Blanchett?
Okay, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just handle that, if you may come up.
Just stating one more time.
Allison Blanchett. So we purchased four ATVs in July, I believe, to replace some of the city's aging ones. How many do we have, is this added on, are these two added on to the inventory? Or are these replacing two that our region has? That's enough, can I help you go through my things? And I see that there was only one, one bid response here, which is shocking considering how many people sell these things, only one person would respond, which kind of brings me to a little bit of your point there about the cost, because I did the same thing you did, we share that near thing. And yeah, that's not, this isn't the cheapest price that you can get these for. So I'm wondering, can you hold off on voting for this? And keep the bid thing open? And see if we can get some more responses that are a little more competitive? I don't believe we're in a hurry to, correct me if I'm wrong, in a hurry to get these, if you had to leave it open for another month? Because I believe that you can get a better price on these.
So we do, okay.
Okay, yeah, I mean, can you leave the bid open until you get certain?
If it's already closed, we don't have to...
Can you reopen it?
We don't have to stop the process all over again.
Then start the process all over again, you only got one response, and we, I, I keep this...
Well, we do, we reach out and do follow New York State Board to, you know, to get the different bids. And there may just be one dealership, dealer in this local, but wanted a bid for it.
Then how about you open it even more? Because if you're only getting one response from all of the dealers out there who sell this, that's pretty insane, and I don't think...
It's, it's common.
Is it really common? Well, I mean, maybe for Long Beach, is this common in other places, do one response? Whenever there's only one response for something so common like this? The previous times when you had a bid open for these ATVs, how many people responded? Just one?
I don't know.
So I, I think you should bring...
I'm saying in general, it's common if you only get one response to a government bid, because very often businesses don't necessarily want to deal with a government agency.
Oh, I can imagine.
It takes a while to get paid. So, I mean, it's common, I think if you get one, then two, you get one or two.
Okay, well, I'm going to suggest to the whole council that you just maybe put this off, reopen the bid, and hope that you can find a way to open it up more, get it out there in more channels, and try to find more competitive, you know, get some more competitive bids in there, because I'm quite certain someone out there is going to sell you these for a lot less. This is, this is our, this is our money here that, you know, you're spending. So thank you.
We do a very impressive push on the bids. In addition to just putting out a bid, we don't just put it in the vault to pay that, we're looking to buy something. The fact that this is two small vehicles, it doesn't engender a lot of work to put, to go through the bid process, because the profit margin isn't so great. We are buying two free police cars, one for the O32 for the police department at the, at, down the road, and we were able to piggyback off state contract. Unfortunately, as much as you think this is a very popular item, it's not a popular item for government, because there is no state bid. When we fly cooperatively throughout the state, we always get a much better price. But the fact that the city of Wall Street were just two single items, it didn't generate a lot of interest, and that's one of the reasons we have some of these problems. Like with the chemicals, we buy so many tons, it was worth the companies that specialize in that chemical, and there's only a few of them, so they can all bid on that very quickly. But vehicles, there's a lot of details that go into them, and it's just not, a lot of vendors are not going to do the work, in addition to going through the whole procurement process and then the delayed payments.
Can you answer the rest of the questions, are these replacements?
Yes, these are two replacements. If you, on your way home, you look to the end of the, the Agro Park, you go on Central Street, you'll see two rotted out ATVs, JR W, we'll hear it.
And Ms. Blanchett, just to touch on something that you brought up, the issue of receiving one bid. Since it is a common response when municipalities put things out for a bid responses. Last week I raised the issue of possibly addressing if we do receive one bid, a mandatory rebid unless there is an articulated reason from the poppin' head as to an emergency or an urgency. I think council's looking into that, and that's something the council's considering. So it doesn't fall on that bear's, it's being recorded.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, next item.
Excuse me, I insist, it's a resolution establishing a staggered workday for elected members of the city council of the city of Long Beach to purchase and determine, excuse me, reporting days work for the New York State Local Employee Retirement System.
Okay, the city council, as all civil service workers of the sort, are entitled to pension credits. The city council has to log their time, that's why there's no value or issue with the newly elected councilman Vendo, because he had to establish the law. So based on the logs that the council has put forth, they're allowed to get some time to write in for time-related meetings, civic events, and such. And this is why there's different values to each council member's name, to get them into the retirement social security system and be fairly compensated.
Is there any questions from the council on the last final item? Any questions from the public? Ms. Blanchett?
Allison Blanchett. Mr. Ronald, could you explain why yours are backdate, backdated to 2016? And I'm curious what it means. I understand that it's kind of like an average day, how many hours, you know, you're kind of expected to work, figure six hours, I mean...
So they're, they're all from the same time period, which is September, October, November, December of 2016.
Okay. So you're just kind of going back for hours?
For all three of us, for all three of us they are.
Oh, the dates are, dates are wrong, I know. The dates are wrong?
They, they're all from 2016, right, and every apartment, they have, the logs are all from 2016.
Okay, your dates are wrong here, then. I don't know, that's your term. That's your term. Ah, okay, I got you. So this is going back to 2016 on the order?
It's the last, it was, the log is from the last four months of 2016.
That has nothing to do with 2017?
Nothing to do with 2017. Other than that, some of them already voted on in 2017, there was a problem with it. The state has to re-mass it against that.
And can you explain how the dates, what that means? The dates per month, how it's different for some, for me, and yourself? You have 18.90 versus maybe a lot higher?
Yeah, it's just a log, you keep of everything that you do, everything you go to, and they come up with some kind of average.
So that, so in 2016, you worked upon, just an average, more days during September, October, November?
I guess, I, I, we were talking about this earlier.
Okay. I'm just curious, so is that, is that an election year that you were running?
Well, it was after, it was more than after.
September, October?
September's a very busy month, lots of events, lots of stuff.
Right, okay.
It's just a log, it's just a log, so you can make calls for an hour, you can write down an hour of calls, you know, stuff like that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that you were working thirty days per month, while campaigning and working for...
No, 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 you're not putting words in my mouth.
Okay, so September? So this is September, October, November, December?
September, yes, September, October, November, December.
Okay, and that is overlapping with the time that you were also campaigning? Okay.
That was overlapping with the time when I was campaigning, while I was on leave of absence from my full-time job, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
That is correct. What is that? In fact? Just state your name and address for the record.
Gee, my hair's running in my mouth, and I live in Long Beach. Happy new year, Caroline. This question, I have two questions, so bear with me. So you all do your own time sheets, essentially, is what you're saying?
A daily log.
A daily log. And there's no, there's no chain balance system to verify where you've been and how many hours you're actually working a week?
I guess not.
No, and everybody has a different number of hours that they're working a week, but they all have the same title, it's a mission of councilperson.
Can I, can I just clarify something? I think that it's not, it's not a regular time sheet in the way that you can envision it, that you come in and you just clock out. There's a period of time when either you were first appointed, for example, mine was for a period of time, this is not in 2015, because I was not in council then. For a period of time in the state mandates, you keep a log of the things that you do that are related to the council, whether it's council meetings, events that you go to, community meetings, that sort of thing. And then there is a formula, is my understanding, that's taken care of by the controller doctor that comes up with this figure of the days and the time. That's why each of ours is a little bit different, because they aren't exactly the same time, each of us, and it isn't something that you continuously keep, you keep it for a period of time, is my understanding, and then you submit that. And it's taken care of by the controller doctors, and they take care of the formula and comes up with a, with a number. I don't know if that's, it's not the same as a typical, like, office time sheet.
For example, this is my, yes, at the MLK event.
Right.
A couple of councilpeople left early, so their time would be different than the councilpeople at State of the Year show, but they get their program.
Right.
So sometimes people act liberally, sometimes people stay longer. There's conversations that, you know, maybe council business afterwards, that I would keep one person there, so there's some events that one councilperson would not vote to, so they wouldn't get credit, and that's some stand-up in there. You're looking at a very insignificant number. This is a pension credit, this is not a salary. So this goes into a major formula, and by and large, a lot of the council members will never receive enough credits to get a pension at the end of this. But they have every right to clock their hours, it's fair, and...
I agree, and it's fair.
And they do, and they do keep their own hours, and I have a lot of confidence, council, that they're, they're honest people. So I think that they should, they should give us their own hours in addition. I think that's true. They should be able to keep their own hours, and this controller does do a double check to ensure it. And the fact that all the hours are so close, so closely aligned, it makes a lot of sense that they're all keeping similar things.
But you are aware that the councilperson, I remember Mike went to jail for this exact thing about his pension service and his time. And I understand, it was about the time they recorded, saying that it wasn't, because unemployment's three days a week consecutive for a whole life. And, and these are, these are hours sporadically, and so I was like, wow, I'm going to jail, but how does the system work if he's not working a day a week? But I want to get back to this other thing.
Well, that's, that's what's actually, the system does work.
I'm not sure, I feel like you got a bad deal on that, because everybody's seeing the pensions. It's, it works different, your time is different from apparently everybody else's time. So we shouldn't have looked, it should have been looked at that same way. And I've, I've been through the ringer with the unemployment before, I know how that works. And I know that people make things up, and that it can happen. If states have to give us a food crack. Is there an office for this council to work out of? Should they want to come in and do something here? I remember that was asked for when you were first appointed as mayor. And I was wondering, do we yet have an office for any of the five of them to actually sit down and do work, if they would come in and do work?
You know, we don't necessarily have our office, but if you're going to have a meeting, those city managers' offices usually will.
Okay.
Yeah, I asked for an office back in 2016, so I was told because the city is going to in some way restructure City Hall, that there's an office would be created for us at that time. Obviously, it's taking longer than what we anticipated, and at that point, that's why I made a request at that time to the former city manager that we could have voicemail so that residents would have access to us at the various numbers, and that's what we have now. But in terms of an actual physical space where residents can come in and see us, we still at this point do not have an office space.
Well, if they're going to have salaries, and they're going to be tying a lot, there ought to be a place, a lot, that's not the city manager's space as well, that they could have their own separate space. It's been two years now, and nothing has happened with that. All right, so thank you for your answers, Ms. Blanchett. Oh, and we do want to give our satisfaction, which is, uh, which is, uh, workers that live on hand clap, all that good stuff, but the snow removal this year was like one of the worst ever.
Anybody else? Misses Seshen? Just state your name and address for the record.
I need questions.
I have.
You mentioned that Mr. Vendo is not on because he just came on board, so do I, do I miss?
Okay, so I can speak to that. My employer is actually Nassau Community College, and Nassau Community College is the joint employer, Nassau County, as well as State University of New York. And so I have my own unique pension plan created for employees of Nassau Community College, and it just wouldn't really be economically feasible to start with this pension program.
Please, one? Just state your name and address for the record.
Norah Egan, you know, not in the way of that. Just to clarify, when you say community meeting, are we essentially speaking for you to attend like a civic association meeting? Or...
Well, of course, we perform a number of different activities throughout the person. We go to a number, each of us go to a community meeting, whether it's a civic association meeting where we're asked to represent the city here, or award ceremony, when we all attend a number of events throughout the city where we are acting as a company. But the other thing is, including citizens, probably the point is to hear that's actually repaying our representative to come and, you know, just sit and talk with us. Thank you. Yeah, no, I have, not the same. Yeah, well, sure.
And if I may, just to clarify again, this is not attached to salary, and this doesn't necessarily, it's a little bit of a misnomer. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're approving pension credits. If you're already a member of the New York State pension system, you can't get, in essence, time and a half. So this, these credits that are established for some council members do not add to your pension, they're just required to be reported to the state, hourly.
Okay, and actually, then just one more question. Where do I, can I find yours, that you were there here tonight from like seven to nine oh five, or tomorrow from two oh four, or?
Missy, as I mentioned initially, you log for a certain period of time on this and don't continue the log, it's not a continuous thing that you have to, that you have to do. Some of us do keep and understand where we are, we each have calendars, we know what we spend our time doing, but it's not a continuous, it's my understanding, it's not a continuous log, you keep, you keep it for a period of time, and then you move on, and that's how they account for it. And as Tom and Mendel mentioned, it's, it's, one of the other early inattention system, it just doesn't really add very much of anything to it at all.
Anybody else? Okay, that's it.
It's a voting. I want a resolution granting later water supply requirements for purpose 917 West Beach Street for a smoothage response.
Hi.
I'm from Vendo.
Yes.
I'm from Vendo.
Yes.
Yeah.
Our start is fine.
Yeah.
Starts in the wrong.
Yes.
I am due to a resolution granting later water supply requirements for purpose 917 West Beach Street for a bakery.
Do you want to choose this side?
I will.
Is that it?
I will.
I will.
Uh, just Mr. Glenn Chek's comments. Mark, Mark. Mr. Glenn Chek's comment about the sign and the crosswalk and things like that. What you're really addressing is a much larger issue, not specific to the business, but to your point, you do need to discuss that and then look at that with a bigger picture. But with that, I vote yes.
Yes.
I'd like to also just request some data with respect to the no turn on bread on that particular morning. We can just have some additional information, but I still hope yes goes ahead.
Yeah.
Yes.
I agree with the resolution to submit public road information to the New York State Department of Transportation.
I will. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
I implore the legislature authorizing the city manager to purchase various chemicals for the water purification plant from the largest toxic business.
Do you have to decide?
I will. I will. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
I implore the legislature authorizing the city manager to purchase two utility vehicles for the city's police department.
I will.
I will.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
I am six with a resolution establishing a standard birthday for elected members of the city council of the city of Long Beach for the purposes of determining and recording dates to the New York State and local employee retirements.
I will.
I will. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
City manager multi-personal appointment filed by the city club to lay the motion to continue.
I will. I will.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. All right, and just before we begin our good welfare, having you on that side, that's we'll give three minutes. Everyone that comes up will have three minutes to speak. And we do ask that you speak with respect and please maintain.
Um, excuse me, I have a family obligation. Today's my birthday. I have five girls waiting to be here with me and family waiting in my house. So please excuse me after the girls come in. I will watch later tonight and follow the recording. Thank you. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Councilwoman. Now, he was going to establish a sixty-five. Okay, Mr. James Hutchinson? Mr. Hutchinson, Hutchinson's on you. Dolores Miller?
He was in the bathroom.
Dolores Miller? Hi, please to state your name and address for the record.
Dolores Miller. Uh, I guess I'm certainly y'all hoping it right. But I'm here because I remember when your past president had spoken and said that Councilwoman Alicia, Alyssa Moore would become the president of the city. And it's been a while. I come, it's an idea, but I've not heard her speak in the position that by right, I feel she should be there. So I feel that there's been some underhanded dealing and I know that they're lying. I have no doubt about that. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I just think that, thank you. I just think that it should be that this year you start off right. You start off by telling the truth and doing what you say you're going to do. I've been here since I was seventeen years old and I just had a birthday of being seventy-eight years old. And this council not meaning everybody, but it has not changed. It's the same. It remains the same. Crooked dealing, underhanded dealing, lying, bad behavior. And, and what you don't realize that is what you do to one another is going to come back upon you. So I think that really by right, you ought to do the right thing. I know what your goals and your aims are with reference to the plan for the city. I, I know, because I say I've been here for a long time. And I know how it has been that people, builders have been burned, oh, I put it flames. And it has drove out the underserved, the poor and the minorities, I'll put it that way. So it's time to stop also being, well, I don't use the word prejudiced, discriminating, discriminating. The spirit of Trump is in the land and I know you all like who said about the president and that he's a liar too. And everybody's playing, you all are young. I know my way out, I really am. Some of you, you have yet, years ahead of them. You got your children. Do the right thing if nobody's standing, but you do the right thing and God will bless.
Ms. Kathy Williams?
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mrs. Kathy Williams of Eight Oak Court, Long Beach, Long Island. I've been a resident of Long Beach for fifty-eight years. And I come before you tonight in the regards of the, uh, the seating of our councilwoman, Ms. Alyssa Moore, is highly questionable. The whole city celebrated when Councilwoman Moore was sworn in in twenty sixteen with the highest amount of votes I've ever seen. And then she was told by the city council president, Mr. Lantouris, that she needed to learn to how and take time to become a council president. What does a councilwoman need to know about being a president when she should be among all these who are helping? But that's beside the point. Again, in twenty seventeen, roofs changed several times. First, we were told it would take a six-month rotation. Sounds reasonable. What reasonable people? Then we were told in one year, something else would take place. But in, in twenty seventeen, the council never held a vote. On January the first, twenty eighteen, an election was held and she wasn't even considered. Why do the rules for this, um, the only black woman elected in the city of Long Beach keep changing? It's like musical chairs, but you don't get the second serpents, you don't fit in. Uh, history is repeating itself, my brethren. Back in the Reconstruction era, if you know anything about history, after slavery, the president at that time put in something called, quote, "Black Code." That was to keep black people from rising up from slavery and becoming real citizens in the United States. You can find it on, it was ten years ago, you'll find out. Being part of history, you should be aware of that part of history because I see it repeating itself again. Tactics. They put up tactics to keep the minority groups up in place. And then when the law heard about this shameful tactic, they were in uproar about how could you do this to people coming up out of slavery, becoming responsible people in the beginning? We don't have a law to stand up for us today. We have you the law. We ask you to do what's right. I don't have, we don't have anything against Ms. Diana. She's innocent. I don't know why even a woman didn't stand up and say this is wrong. This is wrong.
Uh, Mr. Hutchinson? Please state your name for the record. James Hutchinson, Long Beach, New York. Before you start that three-minute time there, with all due respect, I heard Mr. McMoore say something about CSDA painted the Long Beach Farm with the King Center. It is correct, they painted the outside of the Long Beach Farm with the King Center. They did paint the inside of the Long Beach King Center. The entire gym room was painted by myself, my company, Keller Paint called Two Cherish Street, Bay Shore, New York, one one seven zero six. He never received no thank yous. I worked there, I did make two cents. I painted the entire gym room. My boss from Keller painted, did a twenty-five thousand dollar paint job on that gym room. I need the record to reflect that. No disrespect to Marvin, maybe he wasn't told that. Myself with a couple of volunteers.
It wasn't Marvin that said that, I said that and I apologize.
Okay, all right, okay, just my company painted that gym room. Uh, my reason being here today too is about the, uh, the city council president. I was here and it was told that Ms. Moore, she didn't know, uh, she didn't know the ropes. She would get a chance, it would rotate. Uh, I've seen these rotations happen. And, you know, it's, it's kind of hurtful, you know, to see that she's passed over the process in which it's, in, uh, in, in, in the way that it's carried down, okay? She had an historical race. I understand Lantouris was the first Hispanic. She was the first African-American, I could say, first black woman to crack that seal. And not only that, the know-how, what does, like Ms. Williams said, what does it take to be a city, a city council president? She's been here for two years, okay? I would have thought that Ms. Diana would have said, you know what? Yeah, this is wrong. Let me take a step to the side. Let Ms. Moore, you know, be the least of vice president. You know, that's what, then other people start looking at stuff and say, you know, well, you know, this, this process, this, this process is racist. You know, and I'm the least amount of person to start talking about racist stuff. But if you look at it, like I said, I know for a fact you guys have meetings before meetings. Know what I'm talking about? Okay, so I would love to be a fly from the wall, just hear some of the stuff that's probably said, and be around like the president, stop. And you guys should be ashamed of yourself. This is wrong. Also, with that lawsuit, again, with that lawsuit, I have to say, because I'm here, that lawsuit, an eighty-four-year-old woman was taken out of the house from Channel Park Homes and marched over there to a courtroom. No other place in Long Beach, not the west end, not the east end, nowhere. Channel Park Homes and two twenty-five. People were waltzing to courtrooms. Those were black people. It's wrong, man. It's dead wrong. And what I have to say is that you guys are going to run for office again and you can't continue to slap the people in North Park in the face with stuff like this and stuff like what happened with that whole lawsuit thing. You know what I'm saying? What about if someone came to your house and took your grandmother out of the house and said she signed a city charter? That's just wrong. They're wrong. These guys come to the black community looking for votes. Think about that. Ms. Roddenweight? Please state your name for the record.
Lizina Wade.
Lizina, I'm, I'm apologies.
Good evening. Uh, January first, two thousand sixteen, we achieved a victory. First African-American elected to the Long Beach City Council. Not only a victory for the North Park community, but for the entire city of Long Beach. Councilwoman Moore has never missed a city council meeting in two years. She has reached out and worked tirelessly to bring all people in Long Beach together. She has demonstrated strong leadership in the past two years. Honesty, accountability, empathy, inspiration and confidence. However, still denied her rightful position on this city council. It's been said more times than enough. The time is always right to do the right thing. On January first, two thousand eighteen, injustice occurred. Councilwoman Schumer, I challenge you to step down and do the right thing. The people of Long Beach deserve death and we bar anyone else on this council who are taking in this injustice. I can only pray that God have mercy on your deceitful souls.
Mr. Light, two oh six.
Thank you.
Long Beach Street, ladies and gentlemen. My primary concern, I sent an email to the city council members. And I would first like to know, does anyone have a question? Or did you have an opportunity to look at this? Can you, Andy?
Okay.
I'm actually, thank you for sending the historic information. Councilwoman was very important to me coming on to the council. Uh, I am still in the process of reviewing all of the documents that you sent. I'd like to continue in terms with respect to the links, but I did remove the documents and I would love to engage in a conversation with you with respect to that. But I think it'd be very helpful in light of the upcoming comprehensive plan and all of the other plans that are taking place within the city.
Thank you for your answer.
If I can just add, I know that there was a response to your email from our planning department and that they were going to review the information and adjust it and kind of bring it down, uh, so that we can, in preparation for the comprehensive plan meeting, really have an understanding of the exact reasons. But I again, thank you for providing the information. It was definitely comprehensive and certainly very detailed. So I, I thank you for that.
I thank you for your advice. Um, just a brief overview, the information is not. The information is not, I've lived here over half a century, okay? I can put the pieces of the puzzle together very well, because I did all the research, and I have personally been impacted and experienced residential segregation, gentrification, exposure to pollution, excessive flooding for decades. So that's why I think it's wrong, as I said, that's why I work hard to disseminate the information that is available, because the newbies do not have an understanding. They come with their crown on their head, and have no understanding of what many people have endured. Myself, my children, even my grandchildren, and my community. So, having said that, it's not, um, implementation and the betterment, you're not only who's with a parade or with a four-up here. The first inhabitants of the city of Long Beach were the Rockers. The first gentrification occurred on Harrison Street. C Block 277, change order 72497. My family home, section block, lot number 5991, lot 3233. That's a gentrification occurring, Dutton Shop, all down, um, Wall, 5996210. That was called the Chester Street, I gave notice of area. However, being exposed to the second incinerator site, 5979505, I live in Long Beach. That's why I gave an overview of what our circumstances were. This is our home, and it's to the point now where I understand the vision, and not only the B-side, but also the ocean side. Eighty Riverside, 59115, lot 110. So, having said that, I hope, and I do understand, the magnitude of what's going to occur. But having said that, across the board, we'll all have a much better and a greater city of Long Beach with all the development and the potential.
Thank you. Ms. Catherine Schmetti? I appreciate my input on the bakery issue, still here? Uh, Mr. Jordan Farx? Marcus? Please state your name.
Jordan Farx, we said in West Side Street. Regarding Commissioner Cagney stepping up and doing the job as acting city manager, I'd like to point out that, um, based on former city manager's salary plus health insurance and benefits, Richard Cagney is saving taxpayers roughly quarter million dollars annually. And, uh, I would hope that the city council will cease and desist looking for another city manager as long as Commissioner Cagney stays up there.
No, you made it very clear that you have a position.
A position. And, um, Ms. Moore, thank you for serving us with the best and dignity for whose ears. Appreciate it. Councilman Bendo, what do you like to do?
It's different.
Well, I, I, I hope our, um, corporate council can handle lawsuits, he still is fired. Huh? Are we gonna be okay with that stuff?
At some point, yes.
Uh, are we gonna be okay with Sinclair Haberman?
We're, we're, we're way through it.
Good luck, sir. You need it.
Uh, Ms. Brittany Wilton?
I'm Lisa Janey.
Hi, my name is Brittany Wilton, and I don't want to give my address. Alright, so, we'll show them how. This is a water filter, you know, white, pretty white. Yeah, whatever it is. Anyway, this is a Long Beach water filter from my residents that's about six feet old. Pretty disgusting. And it's like this every month. Six feet. Two, doesn't matter. Um, I also brought pictures of my in-laws' house in Maryland. This is about five, six months, if you want to have it. I mean, fortunately for me, I have a husband who can install these wonderful things, so I can bring things that are gross like this to the city hall, so you guys can see, this is what everybody's drinking. So, that's that. And yeah.
Thank you for bringing your attention. Very clear, clean water is a human right, and so, uh, this is a priority for all of us, and hopefully, I guess, as the city manager, can we use the information out to make sure that we can address this particular issue, because obviously, you're not the only person that's experienced this, there are other residents that have also experienced it. This is not the first year this has happened. Since by time here in 2016, people have come to meetings complaining about water, and so at this point, the, the residents need the answer.
So, um, it's disgusting. It really is, it really is disgusting. I too have a whole house water filter, um, at my house, and it's very similar. We did talk to our DPW commissioner, um, last week, he couldn't be here tonight because of a family emergency, um, but I did want him to come and speak about it, although they do say our water is safe, and it tested, and the state regulates it, and the state tests everything.
I'm having actually our water sent to another way out, just to...
I would love to know what the results of that are. But the one problem that we are having, which is pretty consistent, which I don't know if that's what's on there, but when you see the brown water, it's basically crust.
Yeah.
Um, and what happens is, we had a few, uh, water main breaks, and we had a few water mains that froze. And as it was explained to us, I'm not an expert in this, but it was explained to us by the DPW commissioner, it changes the flow of the water, water going from one direction to the other, which brings up, which, which brings up all the sediment, and, and that's where we get all the, all the brown water from, which is disgusting. And, and it'll rip you clothes if you're doing the laundry and the whole...
I have brander drink, so...
Right, so we're aware, um, Councilman Bendo asked about lining the pipes, which is actually unreasonable, uh, to be able to do that, it's cheaper to actually just start replacing pipes. The good news is, in terms of replacing pipes, each year, you know, it's very minimal, but each year when we do road reconstruction, um, not just the road resurfacing, but when we dig up the entire street, we are replacing all the sewer and water mains everywhere. And part of the problem is that we are on a sandbar, as it was explained to me also by the DPW, which doesn't support the pipes, so the pipes all move and jostle around as the sand, uh, washes away underneath the pipes. Does that change the fact that I don't want my children necessarily drinking that water? No, of course not. But it is, it is safe, I have to, I have to say that, it is safe. But I will have the DPW commissioner, uh, contact you, I think you have your number on the, on the form, Ryan, I think I saw it there. And see what we can do going forward, besides replacing pipes, that's really the only, only option that we have at this point.
I mean, at one point, they felt the water in Flint was safe, so...
I'm sorry?
At one point, they felt the water in, in Flint, Michigan was safe, and...
Right, right, well, we are having a... A policy statement is what it really is, um, which isn't necessarily dangerous, but it is gross. So I will, I'm gonna take your card right here and make sure the DPW commissioner holds you, um, but also, um, as Councilwoman Moore asked, that we start putting more information out to the public. I think we're required to do a public, um, a public analysis of our water, if it comes up to you. There is a mailing, that'll go out, and it has all the breakdown, whatever they find in our water.
The brown water, the brown water information on the website and on Facebook page, and the water, what goes out each main?
Each, I'm sorry? Each main, so he said the water filter goes out each main?
If I can, if I can just add something, um, look, if you're concerned that each of us share, we each receive a number of, of emails, text messages, whatever it is regarding, regarding the water, um, we've spoken, had meetings with our DPW commissioner, in order to see what else can be done, in addition to with the process of changing the pipes, and no, this is not the answer they come on here, that is a slow process, um, but that along with all the other improvements and infrastructure improvements are slow and very costly, but in the meantime, we go through the steps that are necessary, and from the state, as well as local authorities, to ensure that the water is safe. I too have the issue, I understand it, and it's not pleasant, but that being said, wait a minute, let me finish. That being said, I think that this is something that the city and the city council, each of us is committed to improving, and making sure that whatever can be done, is done and as quickly as possible. It's not calling on deaf ears, we're not ignoring it, it's something that we probably send emails and speak about on a weekly, if not daily basis.
Okay, but, so what are the hidden issues in terms of kids? I grew up here. One of my brides in the thirty-two years, you know, it's been like that for a long time, I mean, we have, my in-laws' house is married, that's six months old, it's, it's clear, it's perfect, you know? I mean, maybe my husband will go and do whatever his parents have, and he'll see like, "Oh, I'm little black spot, okay, we'll swap it out." He's like, he goes in a cabin like two days, he, he was a pole when he changes filters like this, once, twice a month. It's ridiculous. I'd listen, would man have listened to that speech? Never happened before. There, there's no comparison. I mean, it's unacceptable. And, um, lastly, I'd like to go directly, Bendo, and Diamond, for your decisions, and Ms. Bendo, please.
Thank you.
Mary Wilson, um, temporarily, temporarily, I just wanted to come tonight, um, on the airport, and let you know, um, I just wanna let you know, that we got absolutely no emails or complaints about the snow removal. Kevin Riley was very good about explaining it, I called him, and, um, we complained to anyone that did call us or didn't touch with us, which really wasn't anybody, um, that basically, from what I understood from the state, they moved this amount of the streets, then they removed the piles, it's more important to get the streets clear for emergency vehicles, um, and sanitation then, and I just wanted to thank them, because, um, that was not an easy storm, that was fourteen to fifteen inches, which we haven't seen in a very long time, and I wanted to thank them. Um, it's not easy being out there on the roads, especially when people don't listen and stay in their homes, at least, they're horse-paw on emergency roofs, just doesn't work, folks. So in any case, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And that's the, uh, executive vice president for the CSEA, we're here, Mr. Norman Wilson, thank you for the soul in Long Beach. Those guys, the guys and women of the CSEA worked, many of them worked twenty-four hours before they went home, um, so we appreciate that. It, it is some overtime, but it's been snow going a regular day, so it was overtime thereafter, that's correct. Uh, Ms. Ali Heshen?
Just to address that overtime issue very quickly, after you worked the twenty-four hours, sixteen of which was overtime, they continue to remain on duty to remove the garbage at this time.
Go ahead, thank you.
One, that I put in the January twenty-fifth meeting, that the final meeting for comprehensive plan.
We're still, we're still discussions about that.
Oh, you are? Because I, I thought it would be best if we have our own city manager in place, and we can sit inside that.
I hope the city manager works a correction of the council, so if the council decides to pass the comprehensive plan...
Well, also, the comprehensive means, I went to many of them.
There were sixteen of them, yes.
Yeah, they were mostly, um, not definitive, you know, "Well, we might do this, and this picture is not really a good representation, representation of that," so there really was nothing to even ask, because you asked them, they said, "Well, we're not sure." So I think we need a lot more work before anything is done on the comprehensive plan. And also, with the city manager, I think a man or a woman who comes in to become city manager, or even a black woman who comes in to become city manager, they would need to know and have some background about this, so I really think it should be held up, that's my first point. My second is, that Mr. Romo, I keep seeing that you're having fundraisers, and I know you were just elected, so I wanted to know your fundraising work.
Well, I don't know that this is more a governmental forum, but that's more political, so I, I don't necessarily think that's appropriate, but if you want to, okay, afterwards, make this a political fundraiser.
Because if you're running for another office, then maybe you didn't want to take over the presidency.
If, I'll tell you, if, if an elected official is advertising a fundraising event for a specific office, that money has to be for that particular office.
Mr. William Follow? Good evening, Mr. Follow.
William Follow, Long Beach, good to be here, glad. Uh, I'm here tonight to make a request with this council. We all have cause and reason as to why we seek a higher office and places of authority. Many, if not most, have sought out city council positions as a stepping stone to a higher office, through the, through the county, to support the county and the state. The vacuum deals have been a method of political favoritism for many generations. Policies among themselves have been in place for years, such as the top voter getting placement, automatically assumed the presidency of the city council until now. Now, two years ago, when city councilwoman Anissa Moore, in 2016, the po, the policy changed to, to every six months, the leadership role would change, and representative, with, with representative, that has never happened. Now, this past November, the least voter get, now, assumed the political position of the vice president of the council. I want you to know that we have a long history of denial by the privilege. Those who have sat in those seats that you're sitting in right now, have denied us, in the context of block grants, U-DAG money that used to come, only obtained through using the North Park area as a target area of blight to get the money. This history goes back to the sixties. When the federal government sent monies to build low-income housing, and the money was spent by then the city office. The government replaced the money, and they were told that they had to build what is now Channel Park Home. Now you sit here today, and have denied and passed over... Now you sit here today and have denied and passed over the highest vote getter in this community, and you still deny her the right to sit in the seat, deemed by your own policies. It seems just like yesterday that we were here. Is standing the virtues of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.? In fact, it was yesterday. And we talked about love. We talked about the profound manner by which kind of love we are referring to. We walked together, shoulder to shoulder, we sat down together, we bro- brought bread together yesterday. Thank you so much. What kind of love are you talking about? It's not errors, it's not philosophy, it's not ludus, it's not mania, it's not propaganda, it's not adopted. The love of God is what passes all understanding. It gives you the place and the opportunity for everyone to afford that rightful place. The young lady came up here with two filters, one clean and new, another tarnished by the corrupted nature by what came through it. And you all agree that the one that had the corrupted nature in it was God. By your own admission, you today sit here, and unfortunately, I think this, all of this is falling on deaf ears. You are privileged, and you will not even follow your own rules, and you have began denying us our privilege and our right. You say you love her, if I ask you if you love her, you say, yes, I love her. Then you must treat her like you love her. And you have denied, just like the years it's been done. There is a history, and the history is ugly. And you know what? It's okay, I don't need three minutes to say anymore. You know why? Because it's falling on deaf ears. And if I was you, and I'm sure you're a wonderful woman. If you were a wonderful woman, you would even yourself deny this place because it isn't.
Kathy Campbell? Please say your name.
My name is Kathy Tina Campbell, I live on East Hudson Street, Long Beach. I'm very nervous, but, um, I just want to ask a question tonight. The question is, what is it that Anissa Moore needs to learn? Does she need to learn what I've learned over a lot of years? I am guilty of keeping quiet, I have lived here for fifty years, legitimately, this year fifty years. And I have kept quiet because I was always told, we don't rattle the, we don't rattle the city hall. They're gonna come down, they're gonna come to your house, they're gonna check out whatever. So, I don't know whether it's that she needs to learn. So I jotted down some things today, and I began to become even more emotional because I began to think of how my thoughts, my thinking process has rolled into my children. And it's very bothersome to me, so I'm sorry, you can stop me in my three minutes, but, again, my name is Kathy Tina Campbell. I have officially lived in the city of Long Beach for fifty years. My husband and I own property here, just like those of you who now are buying a home in the North Park area. I can recall attending school with some of the well-known last names here in Long Beach. My parents own two homes here, and ever since I can remember, there's always been some difference placed on the area down there where the MLK is used as a reference point. And I just want to make it clear right here, whenever you guys want to throw some bones someplace, you throw to the MLK. But I also own Kathy's Corner of Care for more than twenty years, right around the corner, in the North Park Avenue. I've sat in on a few of these meetings and have become further disgruntled over how getting noticed or getting help or getting a position here has most to do with who you know and how you can sit and be candidates elected. Every new elected political party that takes over means it, it comes all your friends, here comes all your family. Still, people of color pay taxes, adhere to all the building departments' rules and regulations, and still get closed out of a lot of things. The thing is, if you are black, you never become friend enough. She's never gonna become friend enough to you to become anything else than take that seat and not go any higher. Is that true? That's the question. It seems to me that you made Mr. Nissma, Mr. Nissa ineligible, she's the ineligible enemy, she's the ineligible threat. Why is that? I grew up and I still try to teach my kids, I still try to tell my children something different about this place that I grew up in. I try to tell them something different. I told them that you could achieve, that you could achieve something good here, when in all actuality, this is what I knew in my heart. When the summer positions were given out here for jobs, all we were able to do was to get that little puncher, the puncher hole in the plastic, so that the people could go on the beach. Okay, that's fine, but I just want to know, what is it that she needs to learn? What is it that she needs to learn? And I've said this several times, and I hear you say about people are opening businesses and you're discussing about parking spaces. I simply put in a request to see how far it would go. I own a house on East Fulton Street. With two thousand twelve, when Sandy hit, people had to go to his set to find some place to live. I asked, could I use my property on the top to become a homeless shelter? You basically told me no, because we don't have any parking spaces. Down in the west end, there's never any parking spaces.
Pastor Fuller? Please say your name.
Good evening, my name is Pastor Rebecca Fuller. I have been a resident in Long Beach for more than thirty years. And as a resident of the North Park community, I can say, we support Councilwoman Anissa Moore. We have done it in the past, we do it presently, and we will always support her. We know that she represents all people in Long Beach. But for the first time, we are proud to have her represent us. We will never move this city forward if we keep doing the same thing and never change. Keeping Councilwoman Moore out of the leadership means that this council is not trying to improve race relations in Long Beach. We strive for city values of nineteen fifty to a better world. Let us come together in two thousand eighteen for a better Long Beach and give her the opportunity, not for her to learn from you all, because nothing has changed in this council, but for you all to learn something from her.
Please say your name.
Give a shout out to, um, who's in the house. Hello, my friends. Your favorite wolf Allison is up here now. Um, God, I just want to echo what everyone's saying about this woman being president, it's really, just, just do the right thing. Just step down. That's why you guys call yourselves advocates of people, that you call yourselves like into social justice, but you just stepped on black women for a paragraph. Um, I'm requesting that the City postpone its January twenty-fifth comprehensive planning meeting. First of all, Sustainable Long Island no longer exists. They shut their doors in November, we knew about this back in like October-ish. Um, so there's no Sustainable Long Island, who's overseeing all of this? Second, the last draft hasn't been updated since January two thousand seventeen, that gives the residents what? Nothing to, no updates from the past year, nothing to look at, to bring with us to this next meeting at all. We don't have a city manager. That matters a lot. The city manager, every city manager comes in and they will give, you know, their own twist, kind of like their vision, they set up city hall as they like, whatever, they need to be part of that process, and the city manager is who is in charge of the heads of these departments. So you are in charge of the city manager, but that person's in charge of the departments who are writing these plans, right? So that's pretty silly. Also, the city has not replaced the two planners, as far as I know. Um, we have no planning department. Who's overseeing this upcoming meeting? Um, also, we're still sitting on a bunch of idle grants that we haven't seen anything on. There's three grants that I've been waiting for, um, to look at, the Hapley New Transportation stuff. Speaking of transportation, there has not been one sentence at any of these meetings regarding transportation. Transportation is a key part of a comprehensive plan, and it's also a civil right. I am requesting that you postpone this meeting until you get your business together up there, so you get your city manager, so you get your city manager to help you together, so you figure out your problems up here with your presidency, and, you know, take a little time on that, because this is a very serious document. And when I hear that this might be the last meeting, oh, this will not be the last time you hear from me? Well, you hear from these people. The plan, the semantics are terrible, and it's, it's a shame. Thank you.
Please say your name.
You know, Rock, it's kind of a resident of here in Long Beach, it seems that that going theme here tonight is do the right thing, and it's just so hard for me to act as a council to do the right thing, especially when this last election season, uh, the wrong thing was done, and done constantly again. Um, the community had a nominee, a black nominee, Ronnie Miles, can we give a hand for Ronnie Miles? And he was nominated by the Nassau Democratic Committee and somehow illegally, uh, was pulled off, pulled up illegally, ex-election law. And three people here, right, sitting right here, uh, ran instead, he was unable to get on the ballot, and that's not right. And that's not right, so I'm just asking you guys to do the right thing, it's hard to act when the, the wrong thing continues to be done over and over. And so tonight, we're asking you to do the right thing, so Anissa, uh, in her election season was the highest vote getter in Long Beach history. And in past elections, when the highest vote getter, uh, is usually becomes the president, but somehow, somehow, the wrong thing was done again. So let's do the right thing. And somehow, it wasn't the first time, the first time it was done to a Spanish man, the first, uh, Spanish elected, and his name was Lentores, and somehow, you guys did that to him, and then he was the least vote getter that season, but somehow became council president. And it was almost like you used the brown man to counsel out the black woman. And so we actually stopped doing the wrong thing and finally do the right thing. And I understand some of you have your seats doing the wrong thing, we just ask you in this season, this time, to not continue the Trump spirit and do the right thing. And I can continue on, and a lot of people said the right, uh, set up this thing over and over again, but crowd repeat after me if you believe in it, when I say do the, uh, do the right, you say, do the right?
Yeah!
Do the right?
Yeah!
Do the right?
Yeah!
Thank you very much.
Please say your name.
I'm, um, the president of Long Beach, I'm alive. Um, I felt it was important to speak tonight to support Anissa Moore. Um, I want to speak about her personal experience. Um, I was on other weeks of weeks, and she came out in my second week and showed support and love and compassion, and I felt that felt very special to me, that showed me that she appreciates the community, and she does whatever she has to do to make the community feel good, uh, about, you know, other than I mean, I'm sorry. So, um, I just wanted to say, thank you, Ms. Moore, and I hope that you guys continue to keep her on this community, that she's important to the community. You can't, you can't always serve a community sitting behind that, you have to be out there amongst the people. See their needs, let, let, hear their stories, that's very important for the community. So, I hope you guys reconsider and just, see you have a good person in the community on your seat. And let's keep it that way, let's let the community grow, or look into what needs to be won. Thank you.
Mindy Dunbar? You're welcome. Scott Calley? Please say your name, sir.
Good evening, Scott Calley, I'm not too sure who. Uh, my, my number one concern is that everybody here is safety. I think, uh, we, we have live parts here at nine to six. There's a lot of people that come to our town, we want, we want to generate a lot of money in this town, we want, we want this to be a successful community. I'm sure everyone's up, and we all want to be successful, to be worth, and true. I, I've given back, uh, given three years of my life, coaching P U soccer, I've worked with students in certain camps. Um, each safety, number one, I've seen people ran over on the beach, I've seen it, they just did. I think we need lines on the boardwalk for the bicycles, once again, like we usually have. I really believe that this is a matter of safety. I've been assaulted by somebody on the boardwalk by telling him, excuse me, a bike ride, right in front of one of the officers that's standing in this room right now. I think definitely you have a skeleton crew, a little bit bigger, after six o'clock, where people get off the horse and they come from wherever they come from, they jump off that train, and they gotta pay fifteen dollars to get on the beach. Fifteen dollars at five o'clock, because that's what these kids have to do, that people are punching the park. And then all of a sudden, everyone's down in the water, and then, you know, after, after five years of working in a student's camp, and we all know this, the rip, all these people back down, and they go back out, it's moving like a river. And I'll tell you, there were five people in my life having to jump off the boardwalk with my left foot to pull people off the rocks. Five people, I lost one black child, I couldn't save him, and they told me I shouldn't have been out there. You had no right to be trying to save this child. I think we need to address this boardwalk, even to the bed. All, this whole town, bicycle safety, too. People have total disregard for stopping signs in this town, bicycles, the beach. I think we just need to think about our community as a safe place to live, and start respecting each other, because it's not working, it's not working, what's going on. I think we need to have a bigger crew, maybe till dark, so people can swim till dark. I think that would be the most important thing right now. Let's start, let's work over to the boardwalk, let's get some lines up there. We wasted four hundred million dollars on Jenny's, that did not save us from a hurricane, it really did. Thank you, Adam.
Okay, that's it this evening, I want to thank everyone for coming, and we appreciate the comments, and it doesn't fall on anyone.